Everybody, it's our Bartow County Commissioner Steve Taylor. Good to see you, Steve.
Good to see you, David.
I put on our Facebook, our Cartersville Uncut Facebook page that I was talking to you and I asked them to submit questions. We've probably received over 200 questions.
Oh, really?
Yes. Lot of, and then a lot of people following up and adding to those questions. So I screened through them, picked a few, and I looked for people that lived, resided in Bartow County because that is who you work for.
That's right.
That is your employer.
That's my employer.
First question from Mark Simpson. He said, "If he is for or against a Board of Commissioners in Bartow County, if he is against, ask him why he thinks Bartow can do a better job with a sole commissioner than other counties with our population that have a board."
Well, there is other counties that have boards. In fact, predominantly throughout the state, most counties do have a board. There's still eight counties in Georgia that has a sole commissioner. I think personally, the sole commissioner is the most efficient form of government. Now, the downside, of course, people would say you've got too much power in one person's hands, but that one person can look throughout the county. Don't discriminate as far as where we spend our tax dollars. We just, we will spend them where it's needed. A Board of Commissioners represented, let's just say by five people, would each have their own district and they tend to fight for tax dollars to be spent in that district. And I think that we should spend our tax dollars throughout the county where the most need is. For instance, roads. Some roads are in worse shapes in parts of the county than maybe the other parts. So you would want to go with the greatest need on improving roads. Traffic is another thing. We want to spend and expand roads and maybe have to build a new road in areas that are outgrowing some of the more remote areas. So a Board of Commissioners might not agree with that if the money wasn't spent in my district. But as far as efficiencies go, I think sole commissioner form of government is better. I think on economic development, when companies come to look at Bartow County, a single point of contact and a single decision maker, I think is better for economic development purposes and recruiting purposes than a board, say. So it works both ways. Some counties have boards, some sole commissioners. I personally like being a sole commissioner, but you know, every few years, the people decides, do we want a Board of Commissioners or a sole commissioner? And it's always passed pretty handedly for a sole commissioner, at least in Bartow County.
Thank you, Mark Simpson, for that question. Juliana Edwards, "When will we see road improvements? Potholes are multiplying and getting bigger. It seems the roads are no longer being taken care of."
Well, the roads are being taken care of, but I will say, in the last couple of years, with all the rain and the subsurface under the roads have gotten wet, and then behind that, if we, our winters have been pretty hard, then the roads start crumbling. Our road system does need some improvement. I will be the first to admit. We have crews daily that work on potholes. And if you do have potholes, severe potholes, or one road's really bad, you need to call the Public Works Department, or you can call my office and report those potholes just directly to us. We'll go out and investigate and get those potholes fixed. We do it as fast as we can, and usually we can turn that around within a week from the time you call in, sometimes the next day. But potholes are a problem. We're constantly looking at those. Our resurfacing program will ramp up next year as the new splotch kicks in. This particular splotch is going to pay some debt service. That will be over by the end of the year, and the road improvement should move up quite a bit as far as spending revenue on county roads. We realize that there's problems there and that we need to address those.
Hey, everybody. This is Kelly Jones with Kennesaw Transportation, and I have a job for you. We are always looking for good over-the-road drivers. We have teams, we have solos, we have a two-day orientation that pays you $400, a $2,500 sign-on bonus, and we have a $10,000 seniority bonus for every five years. If you're looking for a new career, we can help you. If you're looking to change jobs, we can help you. Give me a call. Can't wait to hear from you. Thanks.
Hey, Cartersville Uncut. How you doing? Springtime here in Georgia, and the temperatures are heating up, and the show is the deals here at Treasure Chest. If you need a rocker to sit in on these nice, cool evenings in the springtime, we've got them. We've got good-use furniture, tables, odds and ends. We've got new furniture. We've got a whole store of things that you can come in and spend an hour just looking through, picking out those things you might want. We're located at 927 North Tennessee Street. Come on by and see us. You just never know what you're going to find at Treasure Chest Outlet.
If you've been injured in an accident, call the Glenda Mitchell Law Firm.
Give us a call anytime. You'll talk directly to me.
Let this specialist in auto accidents fight for you. Call 770-694-1883 today.
Tom Norwood asks, "What about all the homeless standing around wanting money and living in the woods around Walmart?"
There is, that seems to be a problem in and around, mostly around the city of Cartersville, but on our exits up and down 75, you'll notice people with homeless signs. I don't, I don't know if those are native Bartow Canyons, if they pull up on the interstate, park their car, and try to collect money, but I do know that we do have quite a few calls that come into the Commissioner's office. Our homeless shelter is great. They take care of people. There is a lot of charities in Bartow County that, besides the homeless shelter, that look after those in need. Most every church in the county has a Bread of Life ministry that ministers to the hungry and families and the homeless communities. So we do have our problems with homeless. I'm going to say, it may be a less problem than maybe some of the more metro counties have. If you go down that way, the closer you get into Atlanta, the more of the panhandlers you see down that way. So that's something that we just keep working on, and our charities are doing a great job, you know? So we do the best we can with the homeless population.
Barry Brown, and with a couple of follow-up questions here also. Barry Brown says, "I know the EMS switch was a hot topic last year, but now that six months have passed, how is Metro doing?"
We monitor Metro almost daily. We have a couple of EMS folks that stayed with Bartow County that was previously working with our EMS. They are doing a great job. They track the job that Metro's doing, along with, they work under our fire chief. And the response times have been great. Metro tells me the response time has been moved up around four minutes, and I believe them. They, Metro has a better training facility. We didn't even have a training facility. Metro has a campus down in Marietta that's state-of-the-art, so they can train folks, they can make paramedics out of EMTs, they can train all sorts of different ways. They station the ambulances different than what we did. We stationed our folks just at our EMS stations. Metro moves them around. They have a lot of data, they have a lot of technology that we didn't have. They have so many more resources. And this decision wasn't just about tax dollars. I know we were in the red about $2.5 million a year with our EMS, and we also just knew that to keep up with times, we were going to have to make a significant investment in our EMS to bring on more fully-staffed ambulance crews and spread them throughout the county. And with that, it would be even a greater deficit. So it was time to do what all the other surrounding counties did years ago and go with a private care. That's one part of the government that you can privatize and get a really good service. So, you know, as, as, as things move along, things change, you know? And we were in what I thought was a more older system of EMS care. Our guys that worked for EMS, I've said it then and I'll say it now, they were great guys, they did a good job, and they did the best they could. And so they were very professional in the way they acted then and now. So I appreciate each and every one of them, those guys. I know that was the big controversy. We took about 50 government jobs and turned them into the private sector. And so if you're a taxpayer in Bartow County, that was good. But if you're one of those 50 families, maybe it wasn't so good. So that's, I took that into consideration when I made this decision. And don't think that decision came lightly. I thought about each and every one of those families when I did that, but remember, David, I represent all 105,000 Bartow County citizens, not just those 50 people that work for the county government. So it was, it was a big decision, but it looks like it was the right decision.
Stacy Wilson Stewart says, "I would love to see Metro's response times."
Okay, those should be available. If she wants to see Metro's response times, she needs to dig a little deeper and call our folks at, she can call our folks at the county, or she can call directly to Metro. Just call Metro's office down in Marietta, and they'll share those response times.
And Elizabeth Gregory says, "How much money has changed, oh, it says, how much money has changed to Metro EMS? How much does it save Bartow County?"
I'd say it's probably saved us maybe around $2 million, between $2 and $2.5 million. Remember, we, as we saved our $2.5 million on the EMS, we invested a portion of that in our fire service. We're every, our goal is for every truck, a fire call, to have a paramedic on that truck. So that way, you know, there's like 14 fire stations in Bartow County. And so most of the time, the fire department gets there before the ambulance does. So if there's a paramedic on duty, they can administer aid while the ambulance is on its way. So we think that will speed up. It's still giving really fast, good care to the citizens of Bartow County, and that's the bottom line. It's not who the particular people work for. It's still a sore spot, obviously, for a lot of people. But again, I'll say this once more, we have to look out for all the citizens of Bartow County. These guys are professionals, they know what they're doing, they have great response times. Metro has all the resources available that they can, and they use those resources as far as training and taking care of their people. So it was a good decision. I'm confident more now than I was when I made the decision.
Hi, I'm Joshua Goodman with Elite Stone Supply. We sell everything from hardscaping, landscaping, stone, Husqvarna equipment, and from air-portable buildings. We can make them from 6x10 all the way up to 16x40. We make garden sheds, garages, cabins, barns, anything you can think of, we can make it happen. Do you need to store Christmas stuff? Do you need to store a lawnmower? We can take care of that. Do you need to get away? Do you need a poolhouse by your pool? We can make it happen. Come check us out at Elite Stone Supply.
SOS Mattress, best quality, best price, guaranteed. Where can you find a huge selection of high-end mattresses without paying high-end prices? SOS Mattress, best quality, best price, guaranteed. Where can you save 50 to 80% off retail every day? SOS Mattress, best quality, best price, guaranteed. We offer the lowest prices on the best name-brand mattresses. SOS Mattress and Clearance Center on Highway 41 in Cartersville, one block south of Home Depot.
Hey, Cartersville. My name's Bria. I'm the herbalist and manager here at the shop. A lot of us are suffering from sinus problems this time of year. The pollen in Georgia is horrendous. So when you come in, we can customize an herbal program for your specific individual needs. We offer a lot of educational tools, so you can be educated on each product. We like ALJ, we like our local honey, we have a variety of teas. We also have natural antihistamines, sinus support. So come see me and let us help you find natural relief.
Hello, Cartersville. Getting by lately? Come on by and check us out. We've totally revamped the store. We've added a lot more large-capacity washers for your big loads. We have 40-pounders, 60-pounders, and 80-pounders for those huge loads. If you've got large bedding, come on by and see us. We've got the machine you need from a single person all the way up to a multi-family. If you're tired of doing laundry yourself, we offer a wash, dry, and fold service where you can drop it off, a few hours later, come back, it's ready to wear. We're located at 406 North Tennessee Street. It's All-American Coin Laundry. Come by and see us for all your laundry needs.
Barbara Summy asks, she goes, "We need tiny homes to be popping up in Cartersville surrounding areas. People could live nicely in one without the big cost. This is a serious, serious issue. This could be approved in one day. Please help poor people out and the elderly with affordable housing."
Well, you know, affordable housing is a, that's a tough one. Should the government provide affordable housing? You know, we do that in some respects with the housing authorities, not the county, but some of the, the city of Cartersville in fact, has a housing authority that operates inside the city, the Etowah Valley Housing Authority. So we do have subsidized housing in Bartow County, but how much of it does the citizens really want? And with that, a lot of the needs is based on the state and the federal standards, not Bartow County standards. So if there is a group of poor in Bartow County, those, those decisions mostly come from state and federal planners and not county planners. If the county gets in the housing business, then we are, you're going to see some tax increases like most of our citizens couldn't afford to pay.
Two-part question here. Kelly Myers Adams says, "Pass a mandatory spay and neuter law. Do something to help reduce the intake numbers to animal control." And then Sierra Poston asks, "Why, why, why he won't allow open adoptions at the animal shelter?"
Okay, let's get to the spay and neuter law first. You know, you may, most people that own a pet never dreams of breeding that pet, and that's great because we don't need any more animal overpopulation. But there is some folks that do want to breed their, their dogs and their breeders and what have you. So we would have to look at an ordinance pretty closely to have a public ordinance to spay and neuter every animal. And so we've looked at those ordinances, we work with our animal control folks, they keep on top of things. We think we're going in the right direction with animal control. We just, Debbie Elrod just retired with almost 30 years, I think 31 years of great service to Bartow County. We've got a new regime in there now. Tommy Gentry is our animal control director, Regination is assistant director. They're going to be doing a good job, and they're willing to look at, look and start making some changes. As far as the rescue question, we're starting to look at a new process where we can allow, through facilitators that we're talking to, some volunteer groups that's coming into the county, that's, that's local citizens that's within the county, I might say, that's willing to facilitate adoptions in Bartow County. And that would be owner-turned-in animals. So in the past, when someone brings their animal to the animal control in, out on Burton Hickory Road and turns their pet in, in the past, we've took those animals, we took them into animal control, and then Etowah Valley Humane Society gets those animals and they try to adopt those animals out. Now, what we're trying to look at is if it's an owner release, if the owner comes in and releases their animal to animal control, animal control can call this facilitator and help place that animal in a home somewhere. So we think that's going to help us get to zero kill in Bartow County. We're really close right now. I will say, this community in the last eight or 10 years has, has made great strides in animal control and adopting out animals in Bartow County. And I will also say that social media runs rapid in animal control, you know? If, if there is an animal euthanized, and that happens in all communities, and I realize that this social media blast happens in all communities also. But sometimes the facts get distorted, I'll say, when animals come to animal control. So let's, let's be patient with our folks. They're doing the best job that they can, and they're good people, they work hard every day, and have the same goals in mind that all of us do, to get to zero kill in Bartow County.
Greg Dyer asks, he goes, "Bought a home here seven years ago. Absolutely love the folks and the hospitality of Bartow County. My question is, why are the roadside so littered and grown up so bad in the summer?" He goes, "I was born in part of rural Georgia and lived a long time in a big city in Georgia, but have never seen the, the likes of the grown-up and littered roadside as there are here in rural areas of Bartow. What can he do, or does he have a plan to address this?"
We address that problem every single day. Our roads, I get comments from people often that says, you know, "Our roads are clean, they're, they're some of the best, cleanest roads around North Georgia." And I, I believe that too, but every day, we have crews out picking up litter on the roads. Unfortunately, we have people that still litter in Bartow County. I'm ashamed of that fact. You can go down almost any road in the county and you'll see where there's a cup thrown out, or a bag from a fast food, or, or trash is blown out of someone's vehicle. That is something that we all need to work on and, and make sure that we can. Our code enforcement is out every day trying to write tickets, trying to catch these folks doing this, but it's almost impossible to find somebody that, and watch them throw that garbage out of their vehicle. But we do have some litter problems around, scattered throughout the county. It's not just in the rural areas, it's, it's all over the place. And it's not just Bartow County, it's other counties. But I will say, we have inmate crews that pick up garbage. We have a contract with Loving Contracting. You'll see this company on I-75 and the state roads. Bartow County also has a contract with these folks, and they pick up roads four times a year throughout Bartow County. Our inmate crews pick up every day that it's not raining. So we constantly are out there picking up garbage. If you ride the county roads, you're bound to run into one of these crews picking up litter. Now, that is something that will always, always probably be taking place because people just throw their litter out, and so it's just a constant reoccurring problem. We do realize it's a problem, and, and we are doing the best we can to get it picked up as fast as we can.
Hey, this is Joe Wilson, co-owner of Parnek Jennings Funeral Home, Cartersville's locally-owned funeral home, serving all of Bartow County since 1977. The biggest difference of, of our funeral home here in Bartow County, Cartersville, is that we are a locally-owned funeral home. We make all our decisions right here in the funeral home. When people walk in the door, they're going to meet the owner and know that we're making decisions on what's best for the families that have placed their trust and confidence in us and the needs of our community. One thing we always say to families that place their trust in us is, ask a family we have served. We want people to know that when they come here for probably one of the most difficult experiences in their life, that they can feel comfortable with us. On behalf of myself and all the staff here at Parnek Jennings Funeral Home, we want you to know it would be our honor to serve your family during your time of need. Please call us at 770-382-0034.
If you've been injured in an accident, call the Glenda Mitchell Law Firm.
Give us a call anytime. You'll talk directly to me.
Let this specialist in auto accidents fight for you. Call 770-694-1883 today.
Hi, welcome to Spencer Family Medicine. We're located on Henderson Drive and Westing Commons Shopping Center.
Unlike most medical clinics, we do labs right here in the office, including x-rays, saving you the hassle of scheduling yet another appointment across town.
Here at Spencer Family Medicine, we accept almost all insurance plans.
And we can almost always fit you in for same-day appointments.
We serve patients young to old.
From urgent care issues like broken bones to long-term issues like weight management and women therapy.
Not only that, but Dr. Spencer and staff are trained in aesthetic work.
So come to see us at Spencer Family Medicine. We would love for you to be a part of our family.
I'm Dr. Spencer, and I approve this message.
Okay, girls. Ready?
Ready, go.
Okay. 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 Bye. Okay.
Thomas Stevenson said, "Will senior citizens of Bartow County get a school tax break this year? And if not, when will those who have no children living at home anymore, that have paid for years taxes to raise our children to adulthood, get a tax break on our homes like Cobb and Cherokee do?"
Well, that's a question for the school boards and not for the county commissioners. We've got two basic types of, actually more with the cities, but let's talk about the county government. You've got the school board, and you've got county government, which is me. But in the county government, our taxes is lower than any county that we touch. Bartow County has some of the lowest millage rates around North Georgia. Now, the school system is a different entity, and I'm not going to get into their taxation or how they compare with other counties, but the school system's millage is 8.8, and the county's millage is 9.01. So our millage is about half of what the school system is. Now, the senior tax exemption is an issue that I'm, I'm just a private citizen on that, and I'm not going to share my thoughts because I am county commissioner. And if I start sharing my opinions, I'll start getting into the school boards' lane. And I think that's something that the citizens of this county should take it up with the school boards and our state representatives. I know the state representatives tried to give some relief to seniors this session, and they didn't get it put on, and it didn't come out of committee, rather, but I think they're still going to work on it next year. And that is a, something, David, that I think I should keep my comments to myself as far as senior taxation goes. And I can, I'll just say one thing, I can see both sides of that issue. I can see the school board not wanting to lose those revenues because we do have children to educate. I can see the seniors that's paid taxes all their life, and they're wanting some kind of relief, especially those that are on low income. So let's just leave that to the school board and the school system and our state representatives, and I'm sure they'll come up with an equitable and fair solution.
Ken Turner asks, "When can we get a dog park?"
That's a good question, and I was hoping you would ask that question. We're expanding Hamilton Crossing in our 2020 splotch. In fact, we're trying to do some of the work as we can already before the splotch starts in January 1st of 2020. As we can, one of the first things we're going to do is to build a dog park. We can do that early on. That park will probably come off 41 and Jones Street and go in parallel to Hamilton Crossing Park. We think we can get this done sometime in early 2020. We may even start on some of the grading part in this fall, or late fall or early winter of this year. But that is something that's coming. A lot of citizens that ask about it. There's, there's communities around us, Cherokee County and some of the others, Cobb, they have dog parks, and they're greatly used. In fact, I've heard some of them are already over capacity. So I think that once we get it built, it's going to be well-used, and, and a lot of our citizens are asking about the dog park. So we are going to build the dog park. It should be coming within the next year or so.
And Tony, how, when will work resume on Hamilton Crossing expansion?
That work will resume as soon as the weather breaks. You know, we had a lot of rain over the past, really, 18 months, and as our county work crews would get started again, then the weather would delay us. And so we had so many rain days out there that we couldn't work in that park, that it was just, I mean, it was really terrible. The first thing we're going to do at Hamilton Crossing expansion, the plan is right now, as soon as school's out at Hamilton Crossing School, which is around the middle of May, we are going to start the roundabout there that is going to be right on Hamilton Crossing Road. We'll have to close that road for just a few days after school's out. And so we're going to start a roundabout there. As you go into the school, you can also go into the new entrance of the park. And we're doing roundabouts instead of stop signs and traffic signals now, if you'll notice in Bartow County. I think they're safer, it keeps traffic moving, and it also slows people down, especially in that school area where traffic needs to slow down right in front of the school. Roundabouts have proven to be very safe, and the State Department of Transportation loves roundabouts. We like them now that I've seen the data and the crash history, and there's hardly any serious accidents that happen within a roundabout. But when you have stop signs and traffic signals, you see some pretty bad T-bone crashes. So that roundabout will be the first part of the Hamilton Crossing expansion, and that's one of the things we're going to do before the splotch starts in January of 2020. We're going to start on that roundabout and get it done.
Commissioner Steve Taylor, thank you.